Seven o'clock. I'm Brent Kavalcik, Deputy Mayor. The mayor at Red Hook is under the weather this evening, so he asked me to step in. And we wish his quick return and good health. We are still conducting our public hearing for SICER. This is for the Red Hook Sewer Project. And this is a continuation of our public hearing that was opened on December 14, 2015. And so I would open the floor for any public comment on the environmental review for the sewer project.
A couple of questions. You brought up a lot of information at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
You talked about new folding tanks. Were you figuring out all of them being replaced or just some of them?
As far as we know at this point, the ones that are non-compliance with Board of Health would be replaced.
And that's a case-by-case basis, right?
It's a case-by-case basis, so not all of them.
Well, I spoke to the county. They said they'd have to figure all of them because different type of tank.
Well, Robert could kind of go into what we budgeted for.
So each one will be inspected? And if it's not, if it doesn't work, then it'll have to be replaced?
There's a specific type of tank for this, so I don't think any of them are going to be compliant.
The project budget assumes that we would have to replace them all. So new septic tank, new effluent pump. But since we've heard that some of the septic tanks are concrete and relatively new, you know, if we can reuse it, we will. But each one will have to be inspected.
Right, now, they came up with standby power that that's required now. You're going to have to, the village is going to supply generation, generators, or I guess you'd have to have generators for every unit.
Standby power for the treatment plant or for the pumps?
Pumps, yeah. Because like a day or two, they can be filled up depending on the size of the apartment house or something like that. So they have to have standby power for what they do, their requirements. What's going to come up is have you submitted this thing to the new plan to the county yet?
No.
It was submitted to the state DEC. Because it's a municipal system that the state DEC governs. So it's the county health department. While they would get, they would be consulted by DEC, the permits and reviews would come from DEC.
Well, the county won't take it unless they...
The county's not taking it. This is a village system. And it's not a park county sewer system.
So it's not going to the county like the last one?
No, it's not. And so by virtue of that, we don't have to go through the county legislature. And so the, and actually, we don't have to form the district because the boundaries of the village are the district.
Right, but then that concludes the vote?
Maybe, maybe not. It's, we don't know yet. And that's a matter of the bond council, so you're looking into that as well. So the vote only came down last time, basically due to lack of time. We were, since we, when you get funding, there's a timeline and a clock that basically takes from the time you're notified to when you have to pass a bond resolution. So we were, I think, at the point, if we were to do the normal process as a permissive referendum, if there's opposition or objection to it, people have an opportunity to submit a petition. Certain number of people that submitted that would trigger mandatory public referendum. So at that time, we had 90 days. And if we went through the full process with the county with the permissive referendum, so that's 45-day public comment period plus a 60-day period for public referendum. That put us at 115 days. So we went to, straight to mandatory public and skipped the permissive referendum process. So this time around, we're trying, we have to have the bond resolution passed by January 20, 2017.
I spoke to the county, and therefore, they have these programs out there that use it in their development, small-sized development, where it's standby sized houses, so they know what they're dealing with. This is, I don't think they've done any of the systems in a village yet. Have you checked to see whether or not it's been done in a village as opposed to a small development?
Yes.
Have you had any of the many places?
They don't.
They haven't done.
They don't have?
I don't think they've done a ground-up system. At least they didn't, they haven't, they hadn't done one.
Yeah, you said the last one, that that system was the best thing since sliced bread. This, this thing here is another farce, as far as we can see, gray water. We're not dealing with the heavies, are we?
We're not.
No, you're not.
No. But that's part of the system.
All these tanks are going to have to be replaced. Now you want the village residents to pick it up?
Right now, we haven't decided on who's going to pay for it. Right now, we're looking at several models.
How can you decide anything when you don't know what the hell are you doing?
I'm sorry?
How can you decide anything when you know what you're doing?
What's your question?
Well, my question is, you get sold and building goods like the last thing that you had, that high pressure?
This is a pressure system too, a low-pressure system.
Yeah, but I mean, still the same. What about the backup systems on this net? Like he says in that, you need a generator. I mean, these apartment houses and everything else, they're going to fill up like that. And I don't know why we're dumping all of the gray in one particular area when it's spread out right now. And we got the best drainage that there could be in that gravel and everything else. And it will filter down through into the aquifer. The whole, the aquifer is under the whole village.
Right, and that's what the maps show right there, where the aquifer is located.
Well, it's about where it's located. On the map down in the town, it's bigger than that.
That's the whole town, that's the whole town right up right there.
Yeah.
Over here, yeah.
But it cuts around, we went down, we checked it all out.
Yeah, that's from the county.
You told us to go, you told us to call the county.
Fine, so that's, that's the map that was produced.
Yeah. So why are we dumping all this stuff down in a swamp?
It's being treated. We don't dump it in the swamp. It's treated, it's just started.
Now you got it all in one place. And it goes down across the other road, down in through, and that down towards Hardeman's and then down to the Winnie Best.
And that's what it does now with the treatment plant at Red Hook Commons?
Yeah.
And so we're looking at that. And we also looked at the capacity of that tributary. And so we have enough capacity that tributary can handle the capacity of not what, only what's there, but what we're also proposing. And that was checked out last time and this time as well.
By who?
By, Robert, you want to respond to that?
Right, so...
They did the water project and that. And you come in a million dollars or much lower than what it would, what it would have been in that. Right? Then you had to knock 10,000 feet off of it. And that was what, 3.4?
The front, the phase two water project, we do it right now. But to answer your...
How did you come up that far out of range, you know?
Well, we increased the amount of pipe in those, that was being replaced. So, but to go back to the original question, we consulted with DEC, who sets the discharge limits for discharges to streams. And they said that what we proposed, perfectly acceptable. They approved our report. It was reviewed.
I wouldn't really trust them either.
They are the regulatory agency.
I think they wrote with the county health department in that.
Does it get signed by the health department in the end or is it approved the state that just wrote the stamp it?
I don't know if they wrote the stamp it.
At the end of the day, it's jurisdiction is through New York State DEC. So the health department, county health department does not, we don't have to issue any permits or approvals.
Right, now, you're looking at the $5 million on this plant, correct?
0.9.
So between five, six, seven, eight. The original water plant was about a couple, $3 million left on that, I guess, the first plant.
Were we going to keep these questions to the environmental issue?
This should be to the environmental.
Okay, so if you have an environmental issue, then raise that one. Let's not discuss the financing or the budgets at this point.
Because we're not, we're still, we're doing work on that one, but it comes down to the funding.
You have a timeframe for the...
Bond resolution.
Loan that you've got that's pending, right?
We have a 0% interest financing for hardship to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation.
But there's a timeframe on that.
There's a timeframe, so it's, it's true.
My question is leading that.
That's what we're trying to pursue. So January 20 is when we have to have the completed application in for hardship financing. And the completion of the hardship application, one of the requirements is pass bond resolution. So the bond resolution has to be passed six months prior to our deadline, which is actually June 20, 2017. So January is the deadline, is the six months prior. So that's the deadline.
Is there an engineering report that's got to be submitted?
The engineering report has been submitted, has been scored, and has been reviewed by DEC, New York State Department of Health, EFC. It's been reviewed by USDA. So we're in process right now, working with USDA on that. So all their engineers are also reviewing this process.
But they still don't know the number, assuming the county works on the basis, every single tank would have to be replaced. You know, if you come up short on the 5 million, six, seven to six million, that's a million dollars short. Does that mean another million dollar loan? Or does that mean the project is dropped?
We're jumping into the money again. Stay on the environmental issues. That's another discussion.
And as a scenario, we try to, when we do the preliminary estimates, we do try to look at all worst-case scenarios. But anyway, environmental questions?
People are looking over at the stuff being dumped in there, I guess, you know? They're more...
Dumped into where?
Into Winnie Best Creek, you know? The state says it's okay.
And you know, those are regulated as well, right? The speedage permit that are required and has to be maintained and inspected periodically.
Yeah, just like the Colorado River.
When they mess up, let's go holding the bag, though.
Yeah.
I don't know if you could speak on the regulator, the regulatory agencies and, you know, as far as they go, they have to maintain the speedage permit. And that's, that's something that it takes very seriously. And if there's violations, there's serious fines involved. So it is highly regulated.
Yeah, but all the ways, the solid waste still has to be taken out.
Right.
Part of the program, you know, the fees being paid, that would be, those solid wastes would be taken away.
That's part of the ONM cost, right?
The OMs don't do that. That would be, with the county, they left the property owners responsible for the solid waste.
It doesn't, no, it depends on, it's not a county policy. So it depends on the system. Actually, the step system was recommended by Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. And we are still planning on going forward with, this is after the last referendum. We were going with the grinder pump at that point. We were assuming that we would go with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater. And they made it clear that, you know, they wanted the step system was recommended from their point of view. So this was a recommendation from Dutchess County Water and Wastewater. And it seemed like a good option for us, a lower-cost option, more energy-efficient option.
They could recommend a system, but until they had engineering, they don't know if it's going to work in every instance, so...
That's true with any system you put in.
The others, this current system that they're using, the one that's over by the senior housing, that's, that they pump, that wasted pump out there also. That's, that's all the holy tree near the ground against the gray water.
I'm not sure what they have there.
The one you're talking about is the Red Hook Commons?
Yes.
Sort of senior housing there? That's the, like, your conventional gravity system. So everything goes in gravity pipe to a pump station, pumps it across the creek there into the wastewater plant.
Yeah, but there's solid process there where they keep pumping the solids out?
If you can describe how the system works, I think that would be helpful.
Right, so, so there's no septic tanks, right? Like we're talking here. So all the solids end up at the wastewater plant. Wastewater plant uses activated sludge to treat the wastewater. Byproduct of activated sludge treatment is sludge, right? So the sludge is, has a, if you look at their tank, another compartment of the sludge goes later. And then when that tank is full, they call a big tanker truck, one of those 7,000 gallon ones.
So pumping it away is like the individual to have to do here.
Right. So then, yeah, so then it goes to, you know, larger plant.
So they're operating currently with that type of a system?
Correct, which is, you know, very common, probably the most common way to do it.
But instead, you know, our system, the ONM, like I said, will be covered under the ONM cost of the, of the system itself.
Well, what we're thinking is just how much, how much can the village go with debt? I mean, we got a lot of debt out there right now, this place.
Let's, let's stay on environmental questions again.
Oh, yeah, we stay on environmental.
Stay on the environmental questions, please.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I can make a motion that we close this public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We will be going, hopefully, moving forward this project. Our next meeting in February. We hope to be reviewing the neck deck at that point and part two of the EAF. So with the environmental impact, environmental assessment forum, we're still waiting on comments from the, I believe it's New York State Office of Parks and Recreation and Stock Preservation. We've responded to comments from the DEC Fish and Wildlife. Who else have we responded to?
Hagan Markets.
Hagan Markets. So Office of State Parks and Rec will be in our last one. So that, once those comments are aired in and we can complete the part two of the EAF, we'll be making a decision on the determination. It'll be at the February meeting. So at this time, at 7:15, I'd like to call and order the Village of Red Hook trustees meeting. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the clerk has prepared minutes of the meeting of December 14. I trust we all reviewed it and looked at them. Is there any revisions, additions, alterations? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved?
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Going to the treasurer's report?
Account balances as of January 11. General fund, $270,828.29. Water fund, $180,839.23. Trust and agency, $22,575.40. Materials management, $8,410.82. Petty cash, $90.01. Village Green, $3,886.88. Hardscrabble, $2,704.78. Health insurance, $13,991.96. And monthly expenses, general fund for this month is $87,017.86. Water fund, $11,832.60. Trust and agency, $22,575.40. And materials management, $2,701.61.
And is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report as submitted?
So...
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And go to the monthly police report, the totals for the month of December 2015. There were 326 incidents, 257 in the Village of Red Hook, 66 in the Town of Red Hook, and three in the Village of Tivoli. Uniform traffic tickets, there were 97 total, 75 in the Village of Red Hook, and eight of those included parking tickets and 22 in the Town of Red Hook. There were 25 arrests, 19 of which were in the village and six within the town. Trustee Trump.
I was wondering if the mayor was one of those 25. That's why he's...
The mayor.
Just gets up.
I think he's, well...
Sorry, but... Oh, well, I'll start off with the monthly planning and zoning report. Village of Red Hook, December 2015, there were 10 building issues, two certificates of occupancy issued, four certificates of compliance were issued, and there were 10 municipal searches conducted. No orders to remedy, no stop-work orders, no court appearances, no fire inspections. There was one complaint. And probably heard it from several people out there that, that the CVS lights were shade bright. And we've had some comments on those. So I think what's going on right now is they're probably, they're reviewing the lumens and going to see if what was proposed is what's actually happening on site. And so I guess it's a...
And I think we'll be, you've learned any steps to do, an analysis of what was submitted and approved by the board to what is, and also that'll happen soon.
Have they contacted you? Have you, has CT Mail been involved at all in...
We haven't started, well, they haven't authorized, I guess, to start that.
Okay, all right. I think they were using the CVS engineers and there was some discussion that maybe our engineer might be, you know, better employed through the escrow remaining to, to, you know, do an analysis of the existing conditions and what was approved by the planning board, see if they actually are in compliance with the approved site plans, so...
There were no, there was no final CLO issued at this point.
It's sort of provisional or temporary or something like that.
Yeah.
But temporary can go for as much as six months and be renewed, so...
And they've actually extended it to February to look at the light planning situation, so...
So that they can conduct business but still be provisional, right?
Okay. That's good. Planning board had one item, a sign application granted. Zoning board had two items in front of them, interpretation and an area variance that was tabled to January 28. Let's see here. Money tendered for the month of December 2015 was $1,640. That's good for, well, we, we actually haven't had winter yet, but so... Had Duchess County Planning Federation Board of Directors meeting, our first of the year. We start the, the planning of the spring courses. And it's, it's, we always have a bunch of new planning and zoning members at the beginning, at the reorgs for all the municipalities. So it's hard for us to, to get away from the basic planning and zoning classes for the newbie, so to speak. But we're providing an expanded version that's going to do, that's going to be a little bit more in-depth. And I think it'll be a little bit more interesting. The Department of State was getting tired of presenting the same classes, so they were begging that we would ask them to do something a little different this time. So I think that's going to be one of the classes. It's going to be April 6. And it's going to be two and a half hours. And the next class, which is only a one-hour class, for me, is really exciting. It's, it's not so much for the planning and zoning members, although they should know everything that this class is about. But this is really for the secretaries of the planning and zoning boards. It's minute-taking and other duties of the planning board, its zoning board secretaries. It's really important. I mean, the putting together all the packages, all the notifications, the mailings and everything. It's something that really is not discussed a great deal. And we found this course, the DOS is going to do this as well. I think it's going to be a pretty good class. We're going to advertise this in sort of a different fashion. We're going to do the regular email blast that we do, but we're also going to send one to the supervisor specifically so that the supervisor will then go to the planning and zoning secretary and say, well, you're really not an appointed person that can flush through this yes or no, I'm not sure, and can urge them a little more strongly to attend since they're a paid employee. And so I, I think we're excited that we're going to get a lot of folks down there for this. And we've got a couple more that are just to be determined, the case law updates. This would be more for the ZBA members because this is more law, you know, black and white. It's not planning with the shades of gray. And Victoria agreed to do a presentation on that. And we're going to pair her with somebody else because her is only going to be like a one-hour presentation. And we've got some, some inquiries about doing it from, some personnel from Delaware Engineering about how to read a site plan, very detailed application of site plan reading for the planning and zoning board members. And there's housing and accessory structures and things that we're going to go through. Fall, we're still, still playing around. We're not even sure about fall. But that's, that's pretty much it for me. And I'm excited about the spring classes. April 6 and the dates, the others are to be determined, so I'm not sure.
Good, thanks, Dave.
Still on.
Trustee Norris on materials management and community programs.
Sure. For the month of December, we had 11.4 tons of garbage and 6.35 tons of single-stream recycling. We paid out $1,203.55 and sold $3,277.50 in garbage tags. This coming Saturday, January 16, we have our annual e-waste event. It will be held from 8:00 AM to 12:30 at the Town Recycle Yard. You do not need a sticker for this program. allowable e-waste includes televisions, monitors, computers, keyboards, small-scale servers, fax machines, scanners, printers, cell phones, VCR, DVD players, portable digital music, music players, digital converter boxes, cable or satellite receivers, electronic or video game consoles. There will be some fees this year. Usually, it's a free event, but with the larger TVs, we are going to have to charge a small fee, as well as fees for air conditioning units, dehumidifiers, and refrigerators. There's also some limited home pickup service by appointment for residents who cannot lift or drive their items to the recycle yard. Village residents can call 758-1081 and town residents can call 758-4606. can call 758-1081 and town residents can call 758-4606. This event is sponsored by the Village of Red Hook, the Town of Red Hook, the Conservation Advisory Council and the Bard Center for Civic Engagement. Events, we're kind of in this nice little dry spell. Nothing's terribly active, but we have a lot of things on the horizon. Hopefully by next month, I'll have a date for the egg hunt at the bike rodeo slash toward Red Hook. The egg hunt will likely be in March and the bike rodeo will be in May. And hopefully I'll have those exact dates next month. The library is undergoing construction on their third floor. They're going to start construction on January 19th. And as such, they're changing their hours. So their new hours during construction will be 4:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Monday through Friday, 10 to 4 on Saturdays and 12 to 4 on Sundays. They normally do not have Sunday hours, but they will during construction. This renovation is being financed through grants and donations. They will continue to have events and programming, programs, including a screening of ET and January 29th, which will be held at the Enchanted Cafe, and their annual trivia contest, which will be January 31st. More details can be found on their website, which is redhooklibrary.org. That's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Jen.
Yep.
And trustee Zarcheck will run us through the water report and any notes on facilities as well?
The December water report, during the month of December, the water treatment plant treated 7 million, 738,000 gallons of water at an average of 249,000 gallons per day. During the same time period last year, the plant treated 6 million, 630, 603,000 gallons of water at a rate of 213,000 gallons per day. Water treatment plant used 50 gallons of 12.5% liquid hyperchloride at an average rate of 1.61 gallons per day. At the workshop, still scheduled for Thursday?
Yeah.
I'm going to do, have a presentation on the, the quotes that were given to us from the, up in Albany.
Our workshop?
Yeah.
Your workshop will be on January...
21st.
21st.
Okay.
Yeah, it kinda sounded like you were talking about this Thursday.
Yeah, I was sorry about this Thursday.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm also doing a spreadsheet on a presentation for the electric. It should be ready by the workshop on the 21st.
Talk about the fire.
Well, the fire is gonna be the first presentation.
Okay, good. Good. And just, we did, I believe, if we haven't done, we will be submitting a check to renew our water supply permit for this year. We haven't sent a check out.
It's got to be signed.
Alright. So when it's back, he'll sign that then. So a balance of 120 bucks.
And it's back.
And I'll go to my committee reports. I'm starting with the Village Green Committee. I'm going to report the current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts as of December 31st. Our is follows. Community beautification, $3,556.29. Shade tree contractual, $4,523.15. The Village Green Committee checking account is $3,886.88. The Village Green Committee, Tree City USA and Growth Awards Subcommittee meeting was held on December 7th. And we prepared the 2016 Tree City USA application and reviewed our annual budgets, meetings and events of 2015. And there are still two benches in the village without dedication plaques. And village residents can purchase a plaque for $125. Proceeds from the sale will be used for the purchase and installation of the plaques. And the remaining funds will be used for future village enhancement projects. Anyone interested can contact a village clerk for more information. The Village of Red Hook Highway Department. The village's snow ordinance is currently in effect from November 1st through March 31st of 2016. No parking is permitted on village streets from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. And on New York State highways, which is Route 199 and Route 9 in the village, from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. When snow and/or ice removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Village Police Department or any responding law enforcement agency. Costs associated with the vehicle towing, towing and storage will be charged to the vehicle's owners. Vehicles in violation of the snow ordinance will be towed and stored by H&amp;N Towing Enterprises LLC of Red Hook. A $110 towing fee plus a $25 per day storage fee. And the storage fees for vehicles not claimed within the first three days will be charged to the vehicles owners. Owners can contact the Red Hook Village Police Department or the village clerk's office for more information if your car is towed. The owner or occupant of every building or lot in the village within adjoining sidewalks shall remove snow and ice within 24 hours of a snowstorm. At the discretion of the village board, the village highway department will remove snow and ice left uncleared at a cost of $2 for the near foot. This cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy. Scrap metal was sold on November 20th and a check was received on December 17th for the amount of $53.39, which is quite a bit lower than what we're accustomed to. Price of scrap metal's gone down considerably. Total revenue generated for our fiscal year 2015-16 is $506.61. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $18,984.35 has been generated. Proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the village highway, water and material management departments. Anyone interested in donating scrap metal can contact the village highway department at 758-8600 or the village clerk's office. And the highway department personnel will assist by picking up scrap metal upon request. The Intermunicipal Task Force and Red Hook Infrastructure Monthly Report, the Red Hook Sewer, this may answer some of your questions. Meetings were held on December 4th, 11th and 18th at the Red Hook Village Building. The following items were discussed. The boundaries of the service area were reviewed and revised. We reviewed items to be included in the capital costs of the projects. These items will include upgrades to existing Red Hook Commons Treatment Plant, upgrades and/or replacement of subject tanks in the proposed service area that do not currently comply with Health Department standards. Subject tanks and exterior commercial grease traps, including exterior or tanks brought into compliance, will be owned by the village after the sewer system is installed and complete. Future upgrades and/or replacement will be the village's responsibility after the sewer system is installed. Affluent pumps will be considered part of the project and maintained by the village after installation. The lateral pipes connecting the subject tanks to the forced mains will be owned by the village. Easements will be necessary on private property to maintain laterals and the connections. We reviewed the items included in the operating maintenance costs of the project. These items will include maintaining treatment plant grounds, inspections and permits, affluent pumps and subject tanks, laterals from subject tanks to the forced mains, pumping of individual subject tanks and exterior commercial grease traps, and maintenance of forced mains. We also reviewed information requests for the USDA rule development regarding bond council responses to capital costs and default obligations for service area and outside service area properties. The United States Economic Development Administration fiscal year 2016 initial proposal was submitted on December 18th, 2015. $1.472 million has been requested for the Village of Red Hook Development and Jobs Project, or the municipal sewer system. The secret determination, which we just closed the public hearing today, January 11th, public hearing that continues today. Also, we will be, that's it, the last part, we're not doing until February. And that'll be the complete part two and three of necessarily the EAF. Consider a negative declaration of no significant environmental impacts. The Red Hook Water Project Phase Two meetings were held on December 4th, 11th and 18th at the Red Hook Village Building. And we discussed the following items. The contracts between the Village of Red Hook and the prime general contractor, which is Jurgen Construction Group Incorporated, and the prime electrical contractor, Gross Electric, were reviewed by the village attorney and signed by Mayor Ed Blundell. The contract costs are as follows. The prime general contract or Jurgen Construction Group, their bid amount was $3,45,766. And the prime electric contract that went to Gross Electric, we made at $111,707. A pre-construction meeting is anticipated to be scheduled for early January 2016. I believe next week we'll be doing that with USDA. And CT Mail will issue notice to proceed to the prime general and prime electrical contractors. Phase Two of the Red Hook Village Water Project will provide for improvements to the village's water distribution system, including water mains, fire hydrants, connections and street restoration in the village's southwest quadrant, and a new grounded storage tank will be located at the Firehouse Lane Well Field Site. The project is expected to be complete by spring of 2017. The 2015 Community Development Block Rent, which we will get into also in our regular business, but bids were received at the Red Hook Village Building on December 18th. Robert, Cindy and I attended and opened the bids. The bids range from $74,616 to $32,890. A bid summary has been sent to Duchess County Department of Planning and Development for review. Contracts will be prepared and signed and a pre-construction meeting will be scheduled. Construction on this project is anticipated beginning April of 2016. And the project will be complete by August of 2016. And this award will be used to install new ADA compliant sidewalks in front of and on the east side of the Red Hook Firehouse and to reconstruct sidewalks on the west side of South Broadway in front of Colbert's Laundry and the Dance Center. On the 2016 Community Development Block Rent, the CDPG Reviewing Committee has not completed their review and selection process for the project recommendations. The Duchess County Executive notifications, notifications are anticipated in January. And this is as of a phone conversation with Duchess County Planning of January 4th last week. And this project, this 2016 Community Development Block Rent project includes the installation of push-button activated solar-powered flashing LED mid-block crosswalk signal devices at existing crosswalk locations on Prince Street, Fraly Street and Morgan's Way, all three on South Broadway, and on Philip Street on West Market Street. So hopefully we'll be hearing soon from the county on that. The Intermunicipal Task Force met on December 4th, 11th and 18th at the Red Hook Town Hall. And the following items were discussed. We reviewed the draft historic structures and districts of the Red Hook Town zoning amendments and reviewed procedures to implement amendments. They go through review of preparing the map. That's being prepared right now by Duchess County Planning and Development. The seeker is to be initiated. The local waterfront revitalization program is to be reviewed as part of the EAF. The Red Hook Town Planning Board will also be asked to review the proposal. The Red Hook Town Board will then set a public hearing and notify property owners. And we also reviewed the child daycare uses regarding size, definition, home occupation, both commercial and special permitted uses in the Hamlet District. And Bard College in historic Hudson Valley led the task force on a tour of the buildings and grounds of Montgomery Place on December 11th. And this will be included in the proposed historic structures and districts zoning. The Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I sit on as village liaisons. An EDC meeting was held on December 9th at the Red Hook Village Building. And we discussed the status of the updated Red Hook Village business list. We reviewed the community concerns regarding exterior and interior lighting of the new CVS on North Broadway. We reviewed the status of possible future uses of the former CVS building on North Broadway. And we reviewed the status of the Red Hook Sewer Project and letters of support from 18 village businesses and cultural institutions. The Community Preservation Fund Advisory Committee, which I'm a member of, we met on December 1st and 8th at the Red Hook Town Hall. And we reviewed the following items. The proposed amendments, including biodiversity connectivity, trails and aquifer preservation to the categories and priority list of the potential CPF-funded Community Preservation Fund project plan. The villages of Red Hook and Tibbely are being considered for high priority listings. We also reviewed what preservation provisions of the project plan could be used for biodiversity connectivity. And we reviewed the documents that were prepared by the Cornell University, was represented as from the Hudson River Estuary Program. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of December 31st is $302,547.89. And I also gave you attached is the spreadsheet for the, for the year, so you can see what kind of money's been coming in. Actually for a couple of years now. So it's been pretty good. The Town of Red Hook, Villages of Red Hook and Tibbely Shared Services Committee, both Ed and I are members of that. A Highway Shared Services Committee meeting was held on December 9th at the Red Hook Village and Red Hook Town Highway Garage. And we discussed the following items. We reviewed the overview of recommended actions of the Page One Highway Shared Services Report. We are developing an intermunicipal agreement regarding the implementation of priority study options. Proceed with the implementation of shared personal training, shared capital planning and purchasing, and shared administration and standardization, and develop some capacity to pass it inventory for all three municipalities. And we're in process of developing our request for qualifications for consultant services to assist with implementation priorities. The Salt Hill Watershed Community, both Ed and I sit on that. There were no Salt Hill Watershed Community meetings held during the month of December. The Red Hook Trails Plan, real quickly on that. There are two sessions to review the draft Trail Master Plan. And they will both be held on January 12th tomorrow, on Tuesday. The first session is at the Red Hook High School from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. And Session Two will be at the Watts Depister Hall in Tibbely from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Red Hook Together Monthly Report. A meeting was held on December 10th at the Red Hook Village Building. And we heard from Bard College Center for Civic Engagement, the Tibbely Library, music with Maggie Rothwell, the Parenteaser Student Association, the Red Hook Public Library. And that was it. So those are all the monthly reports for this month. I'm about through our regular business agenda. So the first would be the appointment of a new zoning board of appeals member. The mayor has interviewed several prospective candidates. And the mayor does have power of appointment. And he would like the concurrence by the Red Hook Village Board. And the village mayor recommends Rebecca Aronson to fill the vacant position on the zoning board. Rebecca is a 13-year resident of the Village of Red Hook. So I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Rebecca Aronson to the zoning board of appeals.
So?
Do you second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Who were the candidates?
I think there was two that we interviewed. You wrote one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other discussion? In vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Me.
You opposed?
Opposed.
Three, four, one opposed. So we have a new member of the zoning board of appeals that will contact Rebecca and have her sign the book. And hopefully get her onto the next ZBA meeting. And she could then, you're starting, attending some train sessions.
April 6th.
April 6th. Just an update on the sewer. Again, we're waiting on responses from New York State Office of Parks Recreation Historic Preservation to complete the Part Two of the F EAF, Part Three if necessary. And so we'll have a tentative date of February 8th, 2016, which is our next full village board meeting, to consider the notice of determination of non-significance and negative declaration of no significant environmental impacts at that meeting. The 2015 Community Development Block Rent. We did open bids, as I said, on December 18th. We did have 13 bid packages that were picked up and eight contractors submitted bids. Robert, I don't know if you want to read the letter, a recommendation to the board?
So?
And maybe review the bids.
Did people get a copy of the letter?
Yeah.
So in that letter, you have a page two is the summary of all the bids that were received, right?
Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. The low bid is $32,890 for Upstate Concrete and Masonry Contracting Company, Inc. I did have a chance to review their bid. I talked to them. And they're familiar with the, with the work. They're familiar with the funding agency and the additional paperwork that goes with it. They, and the reservations about their dollar value of their bid. And so I recommend to the board that the contract be awarded to them.
How were they, I mean, able to come in significantly lower than everybody else? I mean, I'm happy about it. Don't make me wrong.
There's a couple that are in that ballpark, in the $40,000 range. Then there's, you can see it jumps off right away to the, all the way up to 70-some thousand. And I talked to the contractors. The big discrepancy was the work on Route 9, you know, that goes by the laundromat there. So basically, if they assumed the work was gonna involve partially closing the lane or causing a lane shift on Route 9, they carry the cost for that. And that's what, that's what basically doubled the cost of the project. So the contractors that bid low looked at, you know, took a close look at it. So the contractors that bid low looked at, you know, took a close look at it and figured out how, they can do the work without crossing the white line, you know, the magical white line. So that would not require, and this is the way we, when we designed it, that's what we perceived you could do it, do the work without getting into the road right away. You're not having to, you know, lane shift the traffic and all that goes with it.
Because that is by definition a reconstruction of that sidewalk. So there's a curb, I believe, that goes around that, like an island, and they'll be cutting in ramps.
Right.
Any compliant ramps and filling in, which is now dirt, the concrete. So it's doable.
So the trick is the existing curb that faces Route Nine cannot be disturbed.
Otherwise, the utility gets excited, you're changing the drainage and all.
And to do the, yeah, so you have to have part, you know, no shoulder signs and all that.
Yeah, okay.
Now, they're gonna have to re-guy that pole sitting there?
No.
We, there's a detailed plan that shows how we worked around that.
Went around it.
But something's gotta be done because you can see it's going through the sidewalk and lifting it.
Right.
So the tying it down is the responsibility of the utility who owned the pole. But we'll have to coordinate that. Obviously, that's probably not the way they want it to be either.
So on that note, I'd like to make a motion to award the two thousand fifteen Community Development Block Grant to Upstate Concrete and Masonry Contracting Company Incorporated for the amount of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars based on the recommendation of C D Mail for the letter of recommendation dated January eleventh, two thousand sixteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Vote to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
And I can make one more motion on this project. And that would be to approve the mayor's authority to sign all applicable and required documents for the two thousand fifteen Community Development Block Grant. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And this is typical of what we've done with all the other grants. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So with that, I want Cindy, I'll return the rest of the bids.
Oh, great.
And I'll keep the one working.
So we'll send Cindy and.
Send me a copy of it though?
Yeah.
Do you have any other copy?
Yes, I needed to prepare the contracts.
Okay, thank you.
And so we'll send the letter plus an abstract of the minutes to Douglas County, Robert Murray, for their review. And be off and running. And Ed wanted me to review just conceptually some ideas that we'll be hopefully considering in the new year in two thousand sixteen. And I'll just run through these real quickly. There's a concept for a solar farm, remote net metering for village residents. And we've had one initial, a couple of initial meetings, looking at what that would mean, the costs, funding available, who would benefit from that. We also were hoping to talk about plans for the old Highway Garage on Firehouse Lane, what to do with that building. And also the intersection at Firehouse Lane and South Broadway in regards to the traffic light and straightening out that intersection. So these are some projects that we hope to be tackling the next year. And then for the water, just a quick update on the cross connection backflow prevention program that we have. Letters were sent to water customers that are required to install backflow prevention devices. And these letters were sent on June eighth, two thousand fifteen. And those people who are notified, some have taken care of it already. There are a few that are outstanding. There are required permits and verification of installations that are all due in March of two thousand sixteen. So if you did receive a letter, you have until March to install the backflow prevention devices and get the verification inspections taken care of and submitted to our, the Z E O. And then we have Resolution One of two thousand sixteen, which is the New York State Retirement, R S two four one seven A and R S two four one seven B. And this is for employees, both, I guess, elected officials and also appointed officials that are on the retirement program. With the elected officials, the two that are currently involved with the program are Jen Norris and myself. And the appointed officials include Cindy Cole, Kathy Feld, Ariand Drews, and Elizabeth Levy. And I'll let Cindy go through that resolution.
As Brent said, it's basically something that has to be done every year with the New York State Retirement. It's a standard workday reporting resolution for elected and appointed village officials. And the elected officials are Brent and Jen Norris. And their standard workday hours are six hours. This doesn't mean that six hours gets reported. This is just a standard. That's what they have to go by. The appointed officials, myself, as clerk and treasurer, is eight hours a day. And the court clerk, Kathy Feld, is six hours a day. And other appointed officials, part-time, are the deputy clerk. For me is Ariand Drews, and she's six hours. And the assistant court clerk, Betsy Levy, Elizabeth Levy, six hours. And this does have to be posted for thirty days, which is what I will do tomorrow and then send it all to her.
And so this is a form of a resolution, standard workday reporting resolutions for elected and appointed officials. We need this be approved. Do I hear a second on the motion to approve the standard workday reporting resolutions for elected and appointed officials?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? And just a quick update as well. There are currently four L E D lights that have, streetlights that have been installed in the village. And this is a pilot project, the test program. So from Fraley Street to Prince Street, you'll notice when you go out, there are four streetlights. And they do have a brighter light and a white colored light versus the yellow light that we're accustomed to. So we're seeing what we think of them, basically. So if you get a chance, take a look at the lights and we'd appreciate your feedback on those. And that's about it for the regular business. The general business, the Reddick Village Trustees Workshop is scheduled for Thursday, January twenty-first. At that time, we will also be starting our gear up for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget workshop. And this year, the New York State tax cap for us is point one-two percent. Which is pretty low. So we'll have some things to look at.
Next year, we'll have the meetings in the dark to save some money.
Yeah, and a lot of our contractual expenses in our agreements were for a two-year period. So we're looking at a one-point-five percent rate increase. We will be considering an override. So we'll look at our budget pretty thoroughly, which we've been doing. And then we have to have a tenor to budget out and with public comment in March two thousand sixteen. So we'll keep you abreast of what we're doing with the budget. Hopefully, we can stay within the cap, but it's going to be a lot of work on our part. At this point, I'll open the floor Friday and still public comments.
You bring up some information about the sewer system.
Yep.
We have, you said it was an updated sewer zone. Do you have copied that out?
We have, it's up in the conference room right now. And it's still be, it's a service area, it's not a zone. So again, because we're not going, we're not forming a district, this is going to be flexible. So we're looking at that. But primarily, it goes from the northern tip of the intersection of Old Post Road and North Broadway down to South Broadway and it'll stop at the Reddick Commons.
That's where it was before.
No, last time, the last time, it went all the way down to Hannaford.
Oh, yeah, I was saying the original one.
The original one. So, yeah, that hasn't changed. And then on the west side, it'll start at Church Street. On the east side of Church Street, go down to Reddick Collector.
You mentioned that the tank being pumped, you mentioned re-tracked too, could be pumped?
Pumped in, owned by the village.
Okay. And is it right away necessary for holding tanks being that the village owns them?
Yeah, because it'd be on private property.
So they're going to be heated, that's going to be done for every property then?
Yeah. And that's what we did last time, was a voluntary easement. And so you would have a choice of doing it yourself or letting us take care of it. And if you let us take care of it, that's part of the O N M. cost, still be part of the O N M. cost, but.
Well, you say O N M., that's the cost per.
Operating maintenance.
The water costs that you're basing it on, the usage, or is this?
No, the water, the usage is based on the determiner benefit unit or equivalent dwelling unit. So O N M. would be the cost of operating, maintaining the system.
So whether that's just for that zone, for that area, or is that for the whole village?
It's for the, for the service area. So we're looking at currently three zones of assessment for the entire village. Reddick Commons would be one. The service area, the general business district, would be the second. And the rest of the village would be the third. How they'll be assessed to determine, we don't know what the numbers are. If any, for some of the zones, maybe it'd have no cost. It all comes down to how much grant money we do receive. Like I said, we have three different grant, grants outstanding right now, hoping to get that cost lower. Right now, with the zero percent interest financing, we're about nine hundred and eighty dollars per year per benefit unit in those areas in the service area, outside of Reddick Commons. So that's O N M., that's first year of O N M. and capital costs. Capital costs will be fixed, that will be fluctuating. O N M., I think it's a little high, but we are being conservative on that. So that's the first year cost. And until we get it off and running, we'll see what the O N M. costs will be.
I mean, going back just to collecting, I'm just looking at the water projects we've got ready. The potential D X Quadrant, I think it's going to be the whole rest of the village in one shot because this is.
For the water, for the water.
And the sewer, you know, we're probably approaching thirteen million dollars or something like that.
Well, right now, we have, right now, we have the Phase Two, the three-point-eight-million-dollar project. And we were, we did apply for a two-million-dollar grant to the clean water, the drinking water state revolving fund. This was for the two thousand fifteen Water Infrastructure Improvement Act program. We did not get that, but we were advised by the state that we will be put on the list for next year's. So right now, two million dollars will help considerably to lower the cost of that, which would help hopefully ease the burden for those in the village that are both connected to the sewer. So we're, we're in funding, we're trying to find money everywhere. And any opportunity that we have, we're going, we'll be applying for the consolidated funding application. If the next one comes up, probably toward the end of the summer, is for the Empire State Development Program, which we did apply for last year, but we didn't get it. The United States Economic Development Administration grant, like I said, about one-point-four million-dollar grant from there. We just submitted that application, a preliminary application. And we're doing our preliminary application right now with USDA. We're doing through some talks on that. The grants for USDA are much lower than they were when we had it the first time. The original grant from USDA, this was because of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, was three-point-two million. It went down to one-point-eight because of the population criteria issue. Probably the maximum grant amount that we're looking at, based on the federal allocation for infrastructure for two USDA is about five hundred thousand dollars. And going back to the water, Phase Three, if we decide to pursue that, that would be the rest of the village that would be upgrading the mains, the fire hydrants, that kind of thing. We are in line for a grant from USDA on that component, the Phase Three of that. So we're very conscious of looking at the money, what it means.
And question on, they have a bond that they put out, people have to get, you know, the contractors have to put up a bond or performance bond, I guess. Who does, if on the sewer system, who's going to be sitting on that bond? Is it the contractor who does the job, or will our engineer, engineering firm be responsible in case there's a problem?
There's usually a performance bond that's issued by the contractor, but that, we're not at that point, at this point.
I'm just wondering about that.
Yeah, it's the same process, we're using it for the water.
Who's, just wondering, who's going to be in case?
In case of default. In case of default, and this is asked by USDA, you know, it's still, the full village will be assessed for that. So we use our power, but usually when a system, if it's a transportation corporation, for instance, the service area would be the ones who would pay for that. But we'd use our full faith of the village to cover the default. And that's based on the bond, the bond laws.
Again, I mean a bond as far as the loan, more part, I'm kind of, when the contractor does the job, sidewalk breaks, you know, we have recourse to take the bond money to pay for repairs. If the sewer system doesn't work out, something goes major wrong with that.
It'd be the same thing depending on the funding agencies. So right now, we're looking at New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, that's U S E P A funding, USDA, which is also federal funding. So the regulations are oversight provided by all these regulatory funding agencies. With Phase One of the water, every month, we had an engineer come down to look at the system, look at the books. We had submit forms. We had to coordinate that with both E F C. and USDA. So there are actually two people looking at that. And it all ought to be in compliance with the bond. So there's a lot of oversight on the money.
Well, not so much, again, the money being spent, if something fails, like some contracts put a bridge up.
Right.
Or, in this case, the building was renovated, there was a bond there that had.
There'd be bond, that's, that's.
That's the contractor, or is that the engineering contractor?
The contractor, typically. Performance bond.
But that's if there's a problem with the work, not the engineering.
Well, like I said, the engineering has been reviewed by engineers from USDA, D E C., E F C., USDA, I mean, there's the list that we get, we get updates weekly on that stuff.
The engineering firms have the E and O that cover their errors and omissions.
So, you know, professional services, there are, there's liability attached to the systems.
Is there a timeframe on that, that you know of, over five years, ten years, twenty years?
On what?
Engineering, if there's a major failure. It's one thing to do a street, and the street breaks up, and you gotta do a street. But if something like this should fail, that would potentially wipe out the village. Sewer system collapses, let's say.
I don't.
Same, the same, is a water system suddenly failed? And what, out of tanks?
Well, we've been required to do by USDA is to put up a reserve account for short-lived assets. So basically, you know, our loans through USDA is a thirty-eight-year term. And some of the parts, components, won't last that long. So they're making us put away twenty-five thousand dollars a year for short-lived assets to cover that repair for the term of the loan.
That would be maintenance issue there.
Well, that's maintenance, yeah.
I'm talking about if something should.
Well, that's, that covers short-lived assets. So if there's a failure in a component, then if, for instance, if our meter broke, or one of our V F, V F D. is broke, or a pump, you know, that we newly installed, that would be covered by that fund, that reserve account. So those are all requirements from the funding agencies. So they're looking at all that stuff on our behalf.
What is the name of this system?
Snuck, it's the septic tank effluent pump. You want to look at, I think, there's a company called Aranco that makes these pumps. There's the S T E P. and S T E G. And the E G. would be the grinder. And so this is without a grinder, just the effluent pump.
And do you have any idea where any of these systems are?
We do, and there was one in Marlborough that was put in. We're looking for local, some local that we can go into. Yeah, there's now data out there that tests over thirty years worth of these systems. So these systems are specifically recommended for small communities. It's actually more efficient. And it's less expensive because of the lower. And it's less expensive because of the lower restoration costs of the streets and trenching, especially when they get into flat terrain like we have here. There's still a lot of cost and maintenance with the sludge stuff. The last project with the grinder pump, we had two, we had to build an air rotor plant, big sludge drying capacities. We had to build actually 100% capacity, excess capacity of that. So we had to end up building two tanks in case one failed. So there was backup on this. This is a little less wear and tear on the system. So we are able to use and reuse the existing treatment plan at Red Hook Commons and expand it on a component type of basis.
You know, the existing one at Red Hook Commons, that was not, that was effluent only.
That's what we're doing.
We'll be adding on.
We'll be adding on the effluent part of it.
Yeah, I'm saying that on the solid waste, if you were using the grinder, technically it's a solid waste, even though it's.
Yeah, we're not using the grinder.
Right. We're saying, they didn't have that system there currently, because that would have been a major cost.
Right. We were to have, had to build these huge air rotor tanks for the sludge. And so with Dutchess County Water Waste Water Authority, they were requiring us to build 100% excess capacity. That means we had to build two tanks. So like I said, it's very highly regulated. They wouldn't let us put something in there that's not tried and true and tested. From our initial conversations with USDA, they've been looking at grinder pumps for a while. They actually, you know, reviewed municipalities with those type of systems. Lake George has a grinder pump system up there.
Well, the one down by Stock and Shop keeps breaking down. They're taking that one up, so.
We have a grinder pump right here in those, but we're not using that, that system. So this should be a little bit better. Any other questions?
We need transport stations, huh?
Should we move along?
Yep. Any other comments? If you all don't mind.
I'd love to move along.
Just one thing.
Yeah.
Just remembered, I sent an email today, the lights out front here aren't working.
On the building?
The three spotlights that shine up on the flag.
Yeah.
So I don't, why would all three be suddenly not?
Stevie, will you make a note of that?
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion to pay bills after audit. Do I have a second?
Some, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And if you don't mind, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting of the January 11th, 2016, Village of Red Hook Board of Trustees meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].